Time to call or order our public hearing, Roxbury zoning commission. And to seat our members tonight, the other members are Kim Tester, Elaine Curly, Candy Valari, and myself, Bill Horgan. Alternates tonight are Cheryl Rosen, Ellen Johnson. Tonight, absent tonight are Chris Hagerty and Jim Conway, and this is the second meeting ever that Jim Conway missed.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. I don't even remember one that he missed, to tell you the truth.
He did miss one, and it was only within the last three years for his knee.
I think when he had his surgery. Yeah, yeah.
So anyway.
He's a trooper.
All right, our members are seated. Oh, we have to, wait a second, we need an alternate member.
Right.
Cheryl or Ralph? Karen?
I don't know who, let's see, did we seat anyone last time?
No, not last time, it's the time before.
Would have to be way before that.
I know Chris was on, it's not here.
I think Chris was on last.
Ladies go first, yes. Cheryl?
You're on.
I'm on.
You said you were gonna make the meeting exciting, you told me that.
I get my word.
I told her it was gonna be a boring meeting, he said, no, I'm gonna be there, it's not gonna be boring.
So Cheryl is seated for Jim, is that what you're saying? Okay, great.
All right, so we'll start with this opening the public hearing, start with reading the legal notice. Who wants to read that? I can read it, but. Why don't we read it? Okay. So legal notice for tonight's public hearing. The Roxbury zoning commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 13, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Roxbury Town Hall, 29 North Street, Roxbury, Connecticut. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public comment on a special permit application by Kathleen Keith for property located at 82 Squire Road, map 25 lot 009. The application is for addition to a single-family dwelling under section 3.10 nonconformity of the Roxbury zoning regulations. At this hearing, interested persons may be present and heard, and written communications will be accepted also. This application is on file in the Roxbury manager's office and the office of the town clerk, and can be reviewed during normal business hours. This hearing can also be accessed by his own phone as follows. All right, so there's the... Next, we have, Karen, we have all the green postal service.
Well, next, we have the verification of the legal notices in the packet.
Yes.
The copies of, yep.
Okay.
Some voices, yep.
That's us, thank you. So now Kathleen or Ralph, do you wanna give us a little presentation? You wanna do it together, or do it? Ralph comes up.
And Bill, to answer your question, we do have Kathleen's receipts of mailing to the abutters.
Well, that's what I, isn't that what I just asked?
Well, yes, it is, and I interrupted you, so sorry about that.
I called it the green notices, is what I called it.
I just had a question, do we have the signature now?
What's that? Yeah, well, we have an authorization form.
Okay.
Yeah, which is fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Here we go, you got it right here. Ready? So Ralph, you're on.
Good evening, members of the zoning commission, my name is Ralph Corbo, I live at Philly Grass Hill Road in Roxbury, and I'm here representing Kathleen Keith in her application to do a small addition to her home at 82 Squire Road. And per zoning regulations, section 3.10.6, we have, I believe, complied with all of the requirements of section 3.10 and all of the subsections of it. And what we're doing here is adding a half bath, a laundry room, and a pantry, and a new entryway to the home. The existing laundry room is located in the basement, and it's a lovely, lovely old home, but it's still going downstairs in the low ceiling basement, and this will be a real, real plus for Kathleen to be able to take care of her laundry without going down to additional pantry space and a half bath for guests. So it just makes the home more accessible. The home is nonconforming, it was built well before zoning regulations were here, and the new addition is well without, you know, well within conforming, it's 68 feet from the addition, from the roadway. Little, let's focus up a little bit.
Hard to see the set back, do we?
Yeah, it is.
You can, you can see it here, but I'm gonna go old school.
Karen, is that map better, the one?
Yeah, they had a flop off.
Plus, I highlighted it, so.
Yeah, I don't think we have that one.
So the addition.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's the same that's up here. So the addition, which is highlighted in yellow, is 68 feet, so we're not adding to the nonconformity, but we're, you know, within the conformance of the present zoning regulations. We're well within the, under the density or coverage requirements that are stated in the regulations. So we're realistically in complete conformance with everything in those regulations. In addition to that, the design of the home has been, was done by Phil DeBries, Motherwell Glock Tech, and it is, maybe if we go to the plan, the actual area. So, the goal that I think Mr. DeBries has accomplished is that, when this is done, you're just going to drive by and see what a lovely home. And it's a historic home, you're not gonna know that anything was done, and I think that was the goal, and he achieved that, and of course, our goal is to be sure that, you know, we respect all of those details and build it accordingly. And I have a little experience, I've done over 700 homes over 40 years, I've done a lot of historic homes, so I'm looking forward to doing this piece of work for Kathleen. I, I think that's as much as I might wanna say, if you have some questions, I'd be certainly glad to answer them for you.
Any questions, Ralph?
I understand, I mean, Elaine Curly, I understand you're under the 25%.
Oh, yes, we're under 25% with the density requirements or the coverage requirements, yes.
Any questions?
No questions.
So we look forward to you coming by in a month or two to.
Do you wanna sing us a song or something for it?
Sorry?
Do you wanna sing us a song or something for it?
No, I left my guitar home, I'm sorry.
A little soft shoe.
And I don't make the racket that somebody does flying over my house. And you know, and I wave, and you never acknowledge.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There is not, there's one person who's probably just listening.
Do we have any questions?
No, I think the packet was quite complete, the roof line is gonna be in right in with the existing roof line. That back is perfect, but I think they covered everything in the application very strictly.
Except the goal is for you not to know that it's a gap.
Right, when we drive by.
That's it, as opposed to going full. That's not what it's going to be.
Right.
You're accomplishing that very nicely.
Thank you.
So.
Some voices.
There's no more comment, questions from us? No more public comment from anyone that I've missed?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Close? Public hearing is closed.
I'm gonna give it back to you, I think we're good.
Okay, Karen.
All right, next. Is this our first regular meeting in a while? Weren't they all special meetings before this?
No, the regular meeting was June.
The last one, yeah, the first one was in June, yeah.
All right, so, time to open our regular meeting of Roxbury zoning commission tonight, and seat our members. Members tonight are Kim Tester, Elaine Curly, Candy Valari, myself, Bill Horgan, and Cheryl will stay on, that's the alternate representative rapper, all right? And Cheryl and Ellen is alternate to here tonight. So, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval. Did I include everything in that, Karen, in the introductory?
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of last month's minutes. Very extensive. I wouldn't find anything.
Yes. I think Candy found one.
All right.
I did. Again.
Poor Candy.
Page one.
It's her name.
Public hearing. Again, I'm a lollipop, gumdrop.
You're what?
See, I'm a lollipop or.
In that same paragraph, you're both, though.
Yeah.
That darn spell check is gonna kill me.
C-A-N-D-Y, yeah.
It changes it.
I know, and it does that with.
It will not take her name the way it's spelled, so it keeps changing it up, so. It'll be sway forever, I'm sorry, it just will, I apologize in advance.
Yeah, should be an I, but up here it's fine, down here it's not.
And then most of, and most of the way through, it's fine, honestly.
All the way through except that one.
I know.
Yeah, exactly.
This is a recording from you every week, every month?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I should know. That's the only thing I found, and I have the minutes.
And we find any else? Oh, all right. I put a motion to accept the minutes of last month's meeting.
This is Elaine, I move to accept the minutes of June 8th, as amended.
Okay, we have a motion from Elaine to accept the minutes as amended.
Candy Valari, I second.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain.
Close?
I abstain.
Kim and Cheryl both abstain, okay.
Okay.
Great.
So the minutes, last month's minutes are approved. All right, John, you're here in person tonight.
Well, nice to see everyone in person. It actually has slowed down pretty considerably over the last month or so. It's economy, or everyone's just doing whatever they've done already. We're still getting the regular permits, like a garage here and there, or some more additional. So that's really slowed down. One thing that just came across my desk the other day was a potential notice of violation where a pool company put their pool equipment on the neighbor's property. And what did they do? They put, they put the pool equipment on the broad property. But that's, I already reached out to the installer, he's on top of it, he's gonna get it rectified, so I believe we'll avoid anything, we're ready to go.
Wow.
I just don't understand it, honestly. Besides that, the building department's starting to go live with their, with the online permitting software. They're just testing it out, seeing what bumps they have in a road like that, so I'm sure that'll be next for us coming down the road, it'll be kind of exciting.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I heard it on first.
They can get all the wrinkles out, and then we'll take it out, and that's perfect.
Pledge your rights.
That's fabulous, yeah.
Yeah, so that pretty much sums it up.
Awesome.
I would have loved to have seen my cabinet, neighbors came coming by.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my goodness.
Didn't know, because they had some work in their house, they just came back with the survey they had done, and you're like,
wow.
It's, so it was, I had an interesting conversation with the installer. Not the first time.
All right.
Free pool.
All right, next item on the agenda is for the commission to discuss the special permit application by Kathleen Keith at 82 Squire Road. Following the public hearing, do we have anything to discuss?
I think it's very clear, it met all 100% of our requirements.
No, swear I'm gone.
Ditto.
Yeah, I agree.
Very complete package.
Right.
It's all the requirements.
So.
It was nice, I just wanna say, I think one of you had already said it, but the application was just very well done and very complete. It handles everything as, as expected, so.
So.
Yeah, point by point, addressed everything, all possible issues, yes.
So with those comments, what do you think? Okay, I would entertain a motion now to.
So then the motion should also include our reasoning, so.
A summation.
A summation, I'm gonna make a stab at it, also. I make a motion to approve the application, 82 Squire Road, Kathleen Keith, for the addition, because it meets all of our requirements for section 3.10 and nonconformity. I second the motion.
Elaine?
Is that you?
Okay.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All right, all in favor of approving this application?
Aye.
Aye, close?
unanimous.
Well, start digging.
Thank you very much.
Well, not quite, we have that, we have a 15-day waiting period, so I'll, I'll talk to you about that. Okay, thanks. Gotta get published in the paper, then we have a little appeal period, they call it, so. But I'll, I'll talk to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's probably a really good advice on what kind of law you should. As before, all the new ones are trans.
Wonderful. I love it, it's been so good. Is that what they said? Seriously? We just, that was our research.
Okay, I made some decisions today. Early in the day, I wasn't sure we were gonna have a quorum tonight. So it turns out we have plenty of quorum, and, but items, agenda items number six, seven, and eight, I felt and still feel that they're very specific and much thought over items that we've been aware of and talked about for a long time. One is the historic commission, the report from the subcommittee tonight. Elaine's here, but Chris is not here, Wendy's not here. So that's the nonconformity subcommittee report. The next item, number seven, was special permit for expansions of nonconforming dwellings, we review the regulations. And that's, what do we call it, refreshing?
Yeah.
Refreshing the regulations and.
That's eight.
That's eight, that's eight, right. And Patrick sent us all a letter, and you have copies of that, do you have? And I think we should let me just go back to seven first. Seven was talking about changing or modifying our special permit applications and public hearings. Because are, are they necessary? But there's plenty, you know, we talk to people, we hear things, and there's plenty of reason to believe these things need to be talked over in detail. So I thought, because they're all three very important things, I thought it's very important if we can do our best next in August, our August meeting, to have as robust a group commission here as we could possibly have. Because we all need to be here. People missing tonight, Jim Conway is not here tonight. And Chris Hagerty's not here tonight. I know they have opinions, I have opinions, we all have opinions, so unless you just really have some opposition to it, I think it's important to table or continue these things until our August meeting. And to have a full house.
I don't, I don't agree. And the reason I don't agree is you're asking for a robust meeting in August. And my suggestion is that we discuss what we talked about in the subcommittee for the individual members to go home and ponder, and think, because we, if you're saying, suggesting we begin the thought process in August.
Okay, we can.
That's one thing.
We can hold that thought. I said.
Otherwise, it's not a big, there's enough of us here to discuss.
By no means diminishing the value in our, our ability to make decisions. But just because there were three pretty important things, I thought it'd be good to have as many here as possible, really. But I mentioned three things here, item six, agenda six, item six, seven, and eight. We didn't officially, I, I tabled them, I continued them, I said that.
Right.
And in the same breath, I could say, if you have something to say about that person, I want to hear you.
Oh, it's number six, item number six? That's all I'm asking for.
That's all.
That's just the report.
We can table the other ones.
Does everybody agree with it? Is that agreeable?
Sure.
Sure, I asked if there's any objection.
Okay, what, what we did basically was we, we, we don't have a solution, but we talked about worst case and best case, that's one way to attack, you know, the consideration. And, you know, obviously, worst case is that very easily a homeowner can decide, rather than dealing with the 25% restriction, that they're going to ask to, for a demolish and build anything, including a monstrosity, much bigger than what would have been original had we not had a 25% limitation. That's one thing. The that really does maintain some of the rural character that weren't supposed to be using terms. The other thing is that there's, there's about 161 houses that are affected by this.
These are the houses that are in the book.
In the survey.
Yeah.
That's what Wendy's gone by, but, you know, we're rough on numbers. The other consideration is now that since we made adaptive reuse of barns, that those are also structures that are involved in this.
Right.
So it's, it is more than 161, I'm, I'm guessing it's like close to 250, but, but that's just a detail. The, the other aspect is that we're asking for someone who has a historic home to undergo these requirements while their next door neighbor, he has no requirements to fulfill.
A conforming neighbor.
Yeah, yes, a conforming neighbor. And, and, you know, we have to look at that objectively. How is it fair? Is it legal? It cannot be challenged. So I think that that's an important factor when we're thinking about revision. That's, that's pretty much it. And so in our packet, I noticed we have, are those rewritten regs? That are in our packet?
No, they're the actual, they're the actual regulations now.
You know, I could pass these out if permitted.
This is your modification?
Charles, Charles Haver provided these for review, so I can hold them till next month.
I think it would be wise to maybe put them in the packet.
Yes.
And have them posted.
Right.
Because, okay, right, because that's a pretty significant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's.
I mean, it's gonna be continued anyway, right, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and my statement, I don't think I, I had the information, I just don't know if I discussed it, I had called Sharon. I had reviewed state regulations, and of course, state regulations simply say the same thing we do, not to increase the, the nonconformity.
Right.
But I had called Sharon, and Sharon, he has an interesting system.
The town of Sharon.
The town of Sharon has an interesting system where the historic district commission works very closely with zoning, planning and zoning, determining, and they pretty much, they don't allow any changes to the facades.
Oh.
The front?
Yes, yes, so what we just approved would be permitted because that addition is off the back.
Oh, so interesting.
Even though it's facing front? That addition was facing front.
It's off the back.
No, it's off the back.
Yes, but it's, it's.
Yeah, but it's, it's back here.
It's, it's not.
When you're looking from the street.
No, I know, but it's not on the facade.
The side would be.
The side is not necessarily defined by the street.
Oh.
No, it's not just a street view, it's actually.
The front.
Of the house, which is the closest.
The front of the main, front of the main.
Right, and they have not had a challenge. And they, they haven't foreseen any issues now.
And what is their percentage that they can?
They don't have a percentage, it's just, they don't have a percentage, but they have, she reminded me that they have smaller lives. They have more restrictions in there.
Oh.
The, the homes that pertain to these, this limitation are closer together.
Okay.
Okay.
So the possibility of somebody adding on a mega extension is pretty much, is limited.
Much more limited, as it might have.
Exactly.
Is the whole town the same zone?
I know, I don't remember, I'll have to check out now. But ironically, I opened up the July 5th issue of Voices, and I don't know if anyone has read it, but the Woodbury Zoners are actually considering, let me read this. Missioners reviewed architectural design guidelines, which would be a new addition to their zoning regulations. They will be advisory and not compulsory, and I thought that was somewhat surprising. The guidelines recommend traditional over contemporary architecture styles and suggest avoiding long, undifferentiated walls or large unarticulated structures. They suggest visually breaking up buildings into smaller sections and encourage traditional exterior materials and colors. So that really is the job of our historic district commission to, to make recommendations.
Right.
I don't, I don't think that this would be successful here, but it, this is so timely.
Right. And that's just the most recent?
That's the summary of my report.
I'm looking forward to.
I'm glad you spoke up, because that was, that was very, it was good, a good report. And I really didn't think you were gonna be here. I really, I really, I really thought, I've had teeth pulled out, and I wouldn't have been here tonight.
Question, no.
No, anyway, you're a trooper, thank you.
Yeah, you discussed the worst case, what, what's the best case? I think I missed the best.
The best case is that we, you know, we would preserve all current historic homes.
Allowing or not allowing?
No, we would be preserved by allowing, by allowing ex, extension, expansions without restriction. And I understand this was all brought about because there was a purchaser who unofficially, I don't, I don't have veracity on this, but backed out of the sale because of the 25% restriction. Okay, so someone questioned me over the last week, pretty concerned that the discussion is, is, what, what, the alarm was, why is the historic district commission contacting real estate agents? To, to jump ahead, if a house goes up for sale in Roxbury, they're contacting real estate agents to notify them that we have a 25% restriction, and they have to comply and apply for.
Are they doing that?
Yes, they are.
So they're aggressively, they're actively?
Yes.
Letting people know.
They're, they're attempting to get every potential purchaser in. They're, they're attempting to get every potential purchaser informed prior to. No, excuse me? I don't know, well, no, they're just stating facts.
Educating.
Yeah, so that, that's my report, it was very brief.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you, that's, that's a good prep for next time.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Can I just ask one question? You said somebody.
Charles Haver.
And he is on the HTC?
Yes.
Okay, so this is written by him?
Yes.
And this is an amendment to our zoning regulations?
He's recommending this as an amendment? Okay.
That would be the ultimate choice from the HTC. That's not.
Regulation.
Commitment, the whole meeting we have.
And that is to exclude all restrictions on expansion, that's what they would like to see now?
Yes, they would like to see the elimination of the special permit, they would like to see an elimination of the restriction size. And, you know, uh, they do agree. Uh, that the few houses, maybe somebody here can help me, I suggested there were only three or four houses that were a hundred percent non-conforming. Does anybody know?
They all are.
A hundred.
If you're, no, if you're non-conforming, there's no, any part of it, the entire thing.
But that can't be true because there's the, this is stating in separate, a separate. Line that any house that's completely non-conforming can be increased by ninety percent. In.
It's why our regs.
In, in the conform, in adding to a non-conformity. That's why I'm, I'm asking you the question, why?
So the question is, how many houses are completely within a setback? And not sticking out?
I don't think that makes a difference.
I know, but that's according to.
According to our regs, we have it written.
Our regs need to be cleaned up.
But there, yeah, but as written.
I could probably research that and come back on the other side pretty quickly.
This red print. Covers that. That we're seeing here. And, uh. But if, if, if it's not totally non-conforming, you already have a non-conforming area behind. The setback that you can do almost what you want to do.
Well, we'd have to read, I don't know what it says, but nothing I can comment on.
Yeah, that, that I think should be.
I think that's for next meeting.
It's a very small paragraph.
Yeah. But related to the big.
Yeah, my goal was to give this commission a synopsis of what we talked about, that was, that's it. And I think it's wise because it helps prepare for when you see next month's packet.
Right.
Sure.
Thank you, Elaine.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'll ask your opinion, shall we table six and, uh.
Seven, eight.
Seven and eight.
Seven, uh, seven and eight for next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Karen will table those.
Got that, thanks, Bill.
Or do we, is it tabling or continuing, what's the?
Either way, if we don't discuss it, we can table it.
Oh.
Okay. Or he can continue, he has two choices.
Yeah, the historic district commission oversees seventy-five houses.
Yeah.
All right, number nine on the agenda tonight, commissioners training, Karen, do you have any?
Yeah, there's a little blurb in the packet, I think that was pretty self-explanatory, but the, uh. The clear is being offered again. I know most of you took it already officially, but they're allowing the, um. The tapes to be viewed and then that can be considered as, as their certifying training. There's no regulation on the way that it's done, though, that's why we ask that. As you complete topics, if you do it, to please give us a quick email with a date and your, that you did complete it. Because I don't know, we don't think there's any other tracking of it at this point.
There's no other track and you don't have to register for it.
Right.
Especially when we did it, we got those emails.
Right, right, right.
But if you look at it on your own.
Yeah, so in order, in order not to lose the credit, just make sure. I think it's four?
Four.
I only did two of the three.
And these, these were certified classes, so that was the good part.
Yep. So we, we have a surplus.
I did the.
I mean, you don't have to do it again if you've already done it, for sure, is that what you mean?
No, we are, what Kim and I have said.
Oh, you have a little more than those hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's something that.
Because you did the.
The order select.
Right, because you did the Northwest Council one too.
Right.
Affordable housing one, oh.
Did not, just did the clear.
Okay.
They ran over.
But affordable housing was covered under clear, right?
Yes. So we don't have to do it again.
No, 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 this is for those of us that have not taken.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you guys are pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
You went right on it and you've got it done.
Oh, with your, you know, oh, with our emails, and you.
Right.
Good.
But that was a good one.
Thanks for Chairman's report, I don't have a report. My report is gonna be talking about tabling these things, pretending these things, so, uh. I'll save that for, for next month, communications, Karen, do we have?
I have nothing to say.
All right, bring this item number, agenda item number twelve?
I make a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
A second for that moment? Any comments, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
That's it, folks.
Cookies!